Record as auto and video for code I C five fourteen one point five two point nine. All is meeting to order. I can make a motion to approve minutes from October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Wendell, we have a guest. That's Wendell.
Wendell looks confused by that.
Yes.
Uh, so it was Nicole.
Last month, we had seventy-four delinquents, thirteen door tags, and zero showers.
That's good.
That's about it?
It's done.
Are you ready, Wendell?
Oh, is it me?
Or I can speak.
No, no, that's fine. This, this is, uh, what we believe to be lined at this time, so. Pretty good. The, uh, this will be on my desk in there, if anyone wants to look at it, but, different years, different linings that we've had. Uh, of course, we just finished up. What we went through, we're gonna do, uh, some manholes down Pennsylvania, then that'll be the end of it. I'm looking like it's gonna be in December.
Okay.
To finish that up. And this is a hundred percent verified, a lot of this is the scans that they did.
Okay.
So we still have to look at that. But I want to bring you up to, probably eighty percent, so.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
When did that start? What year did that start?
Uh, this one is nineteen ninety-one.
Okay.
Where it began. Partways back, and, and, and those linings should still be good, and I haven't verified everything by what camera, you know, what viewings we have. And some of these did not get looked at while we were lining, but, we'll take a look at that ourself and let you know whether we need to continue on, or, yeah, I mean, obviously, we do, but how fast and how much? Just, we did find a lot of infiltration, and sealed a lot out, a lot of, a lot of it was, uh, busted pipe, which was, of course, we took care of with the linings. I still have a couple of, uh, mystery lines coming in that we're gonna seal off.
Okay.
As soon as I know I don't do any damage to anybody. But, uh, all, all went pretty well so far. The reason I chose Lee for the manhole rehabs is, of course, as deep as they are, and when it rains, they leak heavy, and, and, uh, that's the most expensive ones to repair, of course, so.
Okay.
I figure we should try to get, get as many of those done when we got a full crew in, instead of bringing somebody in for
Right.
one repair.
Okay.
Be more efficient that way. Any other questions on that? Uh, Tala Wilkson, um, we did a one-time sewer dump at the ponds for them, the solids. They were in kind of a spot, they, uh, actually, the church needed to be emptied, and they had an event going on, and Greenfield couldn't accept it. So it put it, put them in kind of a spot, um. So we did accept that. At the time, he told me it was fifty dollars per thousand gallons, is what they're paying Greenfield. Cincinnati's told me it was twenty-five. So, anyway. You know how that goes.
Can you follow me?
I will verify that, yes, and, uh, so then we will charge them for that. They are interested in, in dumping there in the future, which we may be able to do, because when I did, you know, when they were figuring out how much our pond was, uh, putting in, I think that was considered solids coming from Wilkson, so we could probably do that legally. Beyond that, we'd have to kind of ask I D M if we can take anybody else's waste.
Okay.
It would be a little bit of money coming in, I just want to make sure it's not a sludge buildup that we have to pay for later to, to remove. I want to make sure it doesn't create that. Let's see, uh, so that's about it, I think he does twenty or thirty houses a year, about on that.
Seven, two.
Took, uh, Colton out for a, uh, plow drive. Give him a try. Did better than I thought.
Well, good.
He really kind of picked it up real fast, so I was real happy about that. All the equipment's not on yet, but I think everybody's in good working order, so we should be good to go there.
Alright.
And that's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Who's covering for Josh?
Andrew. Uh, you guys got the run report, or the monthly report from him, there was thirty-one runs for October. Uh, all the trucks are working right now. Uh, the, the department did vote to go ahead and install that, uh, self-loading cot system into the other ambulance. Part of it I saw was in a box up here, supposed to be delivered tomorrow, and then one day next week, we're gonna be taking it to North of Noblesville for installation. So we'll have self-loading, uh, cot assemblies in both trucks.
That just came, that came today.
Uh, yeah.
Very excited.
Okay. Uh, the, the cot, we bought a, uh, used system that was certified by the manufacturer. Uh, I think it was thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for that, another two thousand to install. It's coming out of ambulance funds. The last one I bought was twenty thousand, so we got a considerable discount compared to the first time.
Right, sounds like it, yeah.
Uh, that's why we went ahead and jumped on it, we've been talking about it and keeping an eye on it to get another one with that, that price. We went ahead and jumped. Uh, we did pass out candy to over three hundred kids for Halloween. The station plans are at the state and county levels for permit review, so we should be hearing back from them pretty soon.
Wouldn't you think?
I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't hear in the next week, week and a half.
Then they'll start back on the construction?
I don't know when, but yeah, they should be starting on construction after that. I don't know what his sub, these contractors got lined up, but the, the excavation people have left their equipment here anticipating, they don't want to pick it up and move it again.
Right.
So I'm assuming they're gonna want to move kind of quick.
Are they still saying March?
May.
May?
Yeah, I think it's May.
Okay.
So.
Weather depending on that.
Sure. But if they get a couple, a month of good weather and get it under roof, you know, it'll be pretty quick. So we'll just have to see where they're at on that.
Okay.
Uh, the only other item, I skipped it and came back to it, is we did, uh, the membership had an application from a Josh Knoll. He'd been around, went through the interview process, he's got some firefighting experience, he's already, uh, signed up to take an E M T class, uh, worked for a towing company part-time, and has, has interest in being a member of the department, so they voted to put him on pending your approval.
Can you hear that?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to have Josh Knoll, probationary member for the volunteer fire department.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
For me.
Okay.
For now.
For now.
For now.
Uh, Brian, you're up.
Three hundred and forty-one calls. We had thirty-nine tickets issued to a dollar rest. A few domestic disturbances. Our open cases are down to seven and twelve. But as luck has it, they increase every single day. And then we wrote a grant for a contraband scanner. Six thousand twenty-dollar unit, and what that is, is when we're searching vehicles, you can use this scanner and it will show imaging behind compartments, so we can see if they're slept in. They awarded us three thousand. I didn't know if you guys would be willing to use the three thousand twenty out of the Loewit to help pay for that.
Wendell?
I mean, I think it's great that you guys got a three thousand dollar grant for it, and if it's something that you really needed, then I'm for it.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase the contraband scanner, three thousand twenty dollars from out of Loewit.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, and, uh, the only other thing was the lease program.
I think we're going to not putting more vehicles on lease program at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Teresa, you're?
Uh, I have sent you all the financial reports, if you have any questions, I have them right here, a couple of them anyway that I can, uh, look here. I sent you appropriations, funds, revenue, depository, cash for installment. The hours I've worked, isn't that to you? Uh, I would like to request, if not immediately after the first of the year, a part-time person to help ten hours per week. At fifteen dollars an hour, I didn't put that in there.
You say ten dollars an hour?
Fifteen is what I said.
Twelve?
I said that, I, I, I added it to the budget for fifteen. So we'd be saving.
Yeah?
If you could get anybody to work for ten or twelve. Because that doesn't happen anymore.
It doesn't.
Can I ask what you want a part-time person to do?
I have different, like, filing and other things that I need help with because I'm never caught up.
You never asked me.
That is true, because you're usually the one that's taking over, uh, with Nikki, and my thought also with hiring a part-time person is trying to find someone that will learn and know this position for when I, uh, because I do not plan on running. And I don't plan on it, I'll be too old. And, uh, I would like someone to know the position so that if something happens to me, then they would be able to take over that position. Because I'm not getting any younger. So it'd be nice to have someone who could do that. And that's why it's only ten hours a week is because it's very minimum.
Except for two years, you want someone.
Well, yeah, we can look and see how it works through that first year or whatever, and then, you know, you guys can make that decision. Well, just with your approval. And if it's not working out, and it.
We can fire them.
I'm not sure that you can, because they would be working for me, so I'm not sure how that works. Just saying.
Just saying?
Just saying.
Yeah, because then what do they do after the, what do they do after the two years when you're gone?
Well, the hope would be that they would run them off. I might run them off, you were correct. But, but my hope would be that they would be interested in doing my position. What I'm looking for is someone who has the knowledge and doesn't just walk in blinded like I did. Someone that is knowledgeable and can, can do that position and will want to come in and have that as their, as their job.
May I speak?
You sure can.
Teresa does a lot, she really does, and I would hate for anybody to be in her position who was not as qualified as I, I've been amazed at the little time I've spent in here with her, how much she does and how much, how much knowledge she does have, so I think if the town wants to keep running smoothly, then someone needs to be trained in this position before she steps down, is my opinion. Are we requiring this person to have any, like, financial knowledge or government knowledge, or are you just picking someone off the street?
I would, I would have to, I would do it like we should, I probably wouldn't advertise in the newspaper. I would just do like we usually do, Facebook, and at the, put a, a sign up because we get more results from that. And then go through an interview process, have a council member with me and a council member interviewing, and then kind of looking at that. And, you know, ultimately, it would be someone that I could work with.
Only problem is you get somebody in here for two years, Teresa, and they run for your office and don't get elected, so then they're kind of.
There, there is always that possibility.
Yeah, I just.
And, and, you know, there's not a lot of people knocking down the door that would want this position, for one thing, but although when, the year that I ran, there was three of us that ran, but nobody's ran since then, so. But if you don't want to do that, fine with that, we'll continue on as we are doing, and.
She did get a, a glowing odd, glowing, she did, and that just doesn't happen, to get something that perfect and stable, it's like, she has done an outstanding job.
I was very surprised at that.
It's just amazing.
Thank you.
That just does not happen. So I think you've got a jewel there, if she can pass some of her knowledge down to someone else, it would be a benefit for the town in the long run. And, and Becky is right, there's no guarantees that that person will get elected, but it requires a great deal to do what Teresa does. I, like I said, I've been amazed just seeing all she does and how well she does it.
Robin?
I don't know about a two-year span, that seems.
Do you still want to do a year? And then?
And then hope that they get elected, because if not, you just throw away all that money.
Well, I'll do it for a year and see if it's working out, and if not, we just get rid of them. Is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
I can make a motion to hire a part-time person for ten hours, fifteen dollars an hour for a year, starting January first of two thousand twenty-six through December
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There you go.
Cop time, Wendell has forty-one as of today, and Colton has twenty-one.
You going back to Thailand, Wendell?
I am not. Just busy.
Then, uh, back to, going on to old business, the new focus H R proposal that I gave you last week, and you guys had a question, and about, uh, coverage on
Yes.
insurance, and I sent you that reply. I emailed that to you.
Yes.
All on what her reply was, so that's for you.
Your thoughts?
Um, it's, it looks legitimate, I mean, it looks like she follows all of the, the guidelines to, to give us a good employee handbook, and after looking over it more and hearing from them, I feel pretty confident, and I, and I hate to spend that kind of money on something we could probably write ourselves, but I don't know that we would include everything. She does carry error and issues insurance. So.
And that was my whole thing too, I didn't, I don't want to spend that much money.
Right.
Because it's a lot of money.
Yes.
But we could take it out, I mean, we have, uh, money in the rainy day fund that we could use, and the seed at fund, there's probably something there as well, but at least we would, for me, I would feel confident that we were updated on the employee manual, and if, if by chance someone wanted to say something or do something, we would have already, we would have done all the steps that we were supposed to do, and following them.
And I think it's harder and harder these days because there's so many lawyers on everything, telling people how much they, it gets money they can get for them and everything, I think it's important to be carry, to carry something like this where, yeah, I'm sure that we've covered.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for new focus H R to come in and design and develop a legally compliant, compliant employee handbook for six thousand dollars. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the animal ordinance has, it is, I sent it to Linda for her to review, and I sent it to, uh, Abby, not Abby, sorry. It'll need to have a review. Wrong sister.
You have a copy of that?
I do, I, I.
I'm gonna copy that.
Linda made, uh, some changes in it.
Okay.
And I, I still need to tweak it to put in, if you still want the, uh, hot-bellied pigs in there. Or do you want to just grandfather them in and not put it in there?
Wendy, what's your thoughts on that?
It's so big, I mean, I was so amazed when I read this ordinance, how large it is, you know, encompasses so many things, which is really kind of a shame, but I talked to Teresa about that, and she said, well, you really have to, you have to say everything because they'll find that one little thing. And that, the pigs, I mean, I would say grandfather it and say, maybe say no more, these pigs, keep it to these pigs, and no more within town limits.
Remember when we had that meeting at the fire station, and Jason Fossett was there, and he said that Greenfields is really good? I took Greenfields and made it, and trying to make it ours. So I can do it however you want.
Well, let's let these ladies, um.
They, they reviewed it, so now I need to make the changes, it was mainly, uh, grammar stuff, I think, wasn't it? I need to make those changes, and then I need to send it to Julie to, for her to review it.
Okay.
And then I can send you a copy too.
Okay.
Or I can print you off a copy, you might want to print it.
Yeah. Or send it to Maggie.
There was nothing in there specific to hot-bellied pigs, though, so it probably would happen to you.
Well, I don't know, does that fall under the, uh, miniature animal part of that? Or not?
Miniature.
They need to be defined.
There needs to be a definition.
Okay. I will look into that, and then I'll get that worked on and get it sent to you and to Julie.
Okay.
Robin, do you want a copy too?
Sure.
And then the other thing Wendell just hasn't had time to work on. And then we're still working on getting quotes on that sewer connection in North Pennsylvania. And then I have an ordinance. Julie, I took an old ordinance that we had where we closed a street, the last street we closed, and just made it for, uh, the one where we closed at Meridian, North Meridian.
That is the right ordinance, right?
Hmm, I don't know.
Yes.
There's a number.
It's at the top.
Is this the number, or is this the number?
This would be the number here.
Okay. I can make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five dash one-one-one-two A for vacate of public street. Which one?
Uh, Meridian Street.
Meridian Street.
North of Walnut.
North of Walnut.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then the Henry County multi-hazard ordinance I sent, well, Andy had sent it, I had sent it to you again just the other day, so you could have it on there, and I have, that's an ord, uh, a res, it's actually a resolution, which is like an ordinance for if you want to approve that.
Do you have a question?
I just, I just wondered about the, this is, this is like for Henry County, is there something?
Hancock has not sent one to us yet, but we would need to sign off on that one too, and I'm not sure if the timing is like they did theirs in twenty-seven, twenty-three, and they did theirs in twenty-five.
Okay.
It seems like, uh, every five to ten years, each county has to do an update. And it's more or less just a working agreement. And if you don't do it, that's fine, but if we had a, a disaster in town, this is a roadblock to getting state and federal funds to help with that. It doesn't happen very often, but if you don't have it signed, that's what their, their leverage to it is, is if we're not involved with it, then we're kind of on our own, when it balls up the red tape.
Right.
When you've got an issue in town.
Andy, is, is that the same thing, we, we got an email, and I know you were on it, from Hancock County, was COAD or?
COAD is your community, uh, kind of like your old civil defense people.
Okay.
Um, they would help in an emergency, so they do trainings and stuff like that, trying to get people that aren't firefighters or E, or E M Ts or police officers to get involved through the COAD system.
Okay.
And in an emergency, they block roads, and uh, right now, their biggest thing is they park cars for the county fair and depot. When the depot, uh, restaurant in Greenfield has an event, they park cars and do traffic for that, that's their, their training, I guess.
Big thing, okay, I didn't know what all that was, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, COAD is a, is a group under the Hancock County Emergency Management that's supposed to help with providing manpower in and then.
That makes sense.
So at some point, we will get something from Hancock County?
Yeah, I can hit, reach out to, uh, Misty from Hancock and see when her next plan is coming about. I don't remember when we did it the last time. And Henry County's got, this director's been here about a year and a half, so he's playing catch-up and trying to make sure all his eyes are dotted and he's across.
Okay, thank you.
You okay, Robin?
I'm good.
Robin?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, a resolution, Town of Shirley adopting the Henry County multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Teresa, have you, you've got a resolution or signing for that? Can you scan that and send it to, uh?
Yeah, I plan to send it to.
I can't think of what his name is.
It's on your email.
Yeah, I've got to look it up, Trey, Troy, Troy something. I haven't had to work with him too much.
I can't ever get rid of everything, can I?
No.
No. I can make a motion to approve payroll allowance, stock it. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I can make a motion to prove claims to be paid.
Aye.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you have anything else?
I do.
You do?
I do. I've been working on trying to get like a logo or something, and I'm at a point where I just need some more ideas and things, I've got a person who's working, who, uh, is a graphic designer and is working on it, but, uh, and this is like the one I like the most. The color schemes and all of that don't matter, it's just that we don't, you know, like if we wanted to, we have, like Wendell has on a shirt right now. We have that kind of, but it's a little, I don't know what the word is, is, I can't say wordy because it's just.
It's wordy, it's two words.
Well, I know, I was thinking, it's got four words on the name.
The graphic is not very bold.
Yeah.
And it's kind of got too much detail in it to do some things with.
Yeah.
Is that a good way to put that?
Yes, thank you, I was trying to think of the words.
What about the train that said our police patch?
Well, that's what these kind of, will you want to bring one of those out?
That guy, like a train, listen, like.
And that's what I have, is a train on this one. I wanted to play, I really like the visionary one, but it's the visionary one.
I don't mind with the circle one that you've done on the agenda.
Well, that was done through A I.
Was it really? I mean, I like the big S in the smaller case, or the smaller font, surely.
Yeah.
And you can insert the friendliness, whatever, wherever.
Well, yeah, I kind of wanted to.
That was a nice graphic.
To take that off, the same thing as Wendell, just. Yeah, it's just opposite of what.
There's a theme here, I, I, I feel.
That's what our community was known for.
Well, that, that's what I have to. That's what I kind of liked, I kind of liked the fact that it has the people, but the problem is to try to find.
Yeah, well, yeah, just.
This is not here.
Friendliness community, I would like.
All they have to do is just.
Yeah.
I wanted, I didn't really want that in there, and then, you know, I wanted like, what does it say around it, like Town of Shirley established in, and Henry, Henry, Hancock Henry County on there, or whatever, like a logo would be. Something that, you know, like, if we wanted to get someone, we could put it on the side of the, on the front of the building or something, in that one spot, that.
Well, I've been wondering about the sign that got.
Yeah, we talked about that too.
In the north of the town, we still have at least one sign that's not broken. Mounting that one on the front of the building, that inset.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's up to you guys.
I tried to get them to, to do something with that type of logo, but I couldn't, it just, we couldn't get it to work.
Right, this train with this thing.
It's, it's, the only problem is that the smoke, if you're gonna use this, this has to be, it's seen from the.
Yeah.
Smoke's not a Byron Mandeloo friend.
Yeah, it's twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty-twenty-five.
It made me do that smoke.
That's what I didn't like that, but I, I mean, and I like this too, like what this is right here on your agenda. I know, because I did this with A I and then straightened it, that's why. It looks like that. It's not been digitally done correctly.
So you just want to stay with this one?
I like that one. That's what I enjoy.
Okay, so I.
Cause I have the train in depot, huh?
Yeah, that's what I liked about it, but I just, I want to take this part out, that friendliness lives here or whatever.
We're not friendly.
That's, you could put it in there.
You don't want to be.
Put in there the establish and the. Well, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I want to do, but like I said, this was A I, think those back to your.
I just, Chat G P T does great.
Well, actually, it might have been Chat G P T is, is one of those, but it comes out like this.
Yeah. The train designer.
Part of it is, right?
It's not running. It's the environmentally friendly version.
It's really.
The stationary one.
That's, that's what I wanted to know what you guys wanted, so then I can work with something and get some other, hopefully, we can get it accomplished.
Anybody have anything else? No? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Be careful going home.
I need to see which one of those. My name.
Well, if it's you. Nobody's name.
The woman's on paper.
Well, since you said it out, it'd be your.
Yeah, I do, so here it is.
It's been drunk what you feel. You know?
Thank you, Rob.
I'm just kidding.
See you next month.
I know it's going to take her, I think, she told me like four or six weeks ago, I'll put one together, it's just there.
Karen, you're quite much.
Yeah.
I haven't done.
I haven't, is anybody?